Good afternoon and welcome to this joint webinar between Engineers Ireland and the National Building Control Office, the NBCO. I am Mairead Feehan, Head of the National Building Control Office. The National Building Control Office is managed by Dublin City Council on behalf of the 31 building control authorities, with the objective to promote a culture of compliance with the building regulations. We do this through a programme of education and training, inspections, providing compliance support to building control authorities, owners, builders and designers in relation to works or buildings. Our Building Control Administration System, or the BCMS, has 120,000 registered users. As building control authorities, our market surveillance authorities under the EU Construction Products Regulations, and Brexit being back on the table, this office is preparing to undertake a national market surveillance role for construction products. Our office is located beside City Hall at Three Pallas Street, Dublin 2. Dublin City Council's Chief Executive, Owen Keegan, requested the office of the 21st century, so we operate as a paperless, dynamic work environment, with all office systems designed to be highly mobile. So the office can operate from anywhere, and since Covid-19 lockdown, it has been business as usual. Our contact email is support@nbco.gov.ie. Today, I'm happy to introduce Pat Nestor, Head of Building Control, Dublin City Council. The National Building Control Office team member Shirley Lamb is on hand to assist today, with Sinead Quinn-Phillips in Engineers Ireland, is responsible for organising this webinar. The NBCO team members consist of Sabrina McDonald, Shirley Lamb, Richard Butler, Enno Canila and Kelde Minion and myself. We will have a questions and answers session following Pat's presentation, time permitting. Use the question and answers feature at the bottom of your screen to add your questions throughout the webinar. If we don't have time at the end, we will collate all the questions and email the answers to all attendees. We will launch three polls throughout the webinar, two polls just before we hand over to Pat and one following Pat's presentation. Each will be launched for 30 seconds and we'd appreciate if you could take part. The presentation today encompasses the application of Part L of the building regulations to existing buildings, energy retrofit, extensions and renovations of existing dwellings and other buildings, which is a very important building environmental regulation to mitigate against the negative impacts of climate change. So just before we hand over to Pat, Shirley is going to ask our first two poll questions. So the first of our poll questions is on screen now. What organisation are you from, local authority, consultants, contractors or other? You have 30 seconds there to answer. So the results of the poll are 22% local authority, 54% consultant, 4% contractors and 20% other. The second of our poll questions is on screen now. As before, you have 30 seconds to answer. Where did you hear about this webinar? Engineers Ireland, Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, email or other? The results of the poll are 72% Engineers Ireland, 3% Twitter, 0% Facebook, 6% LinkedIn, 13% email and 5% other. I'm now going to hand you over to Pat, who will start his presentation.
Hi, good afternoon everybody and thank you Mairead and thank you Shirley. And thanks to Engineers Ireland and the National Building Control Office for the opportunity to speak to you today on Part L of the building regulations. Now, I'm going to start sharing my screen. So the building regulations and Part L and how they apply to existing buildings would be the focus of what I'll be talking about today, in terms of retrofit, extensions and renovations, and a very important part of the building regulations in terms of the contribution towards mitigation of climate change and our international, overriding international obligations in that regard. But before I get stuck into that, I just want to give a gentle reminder to people. Like my role is as a building control officer. I have many colleagues around the country in local authorities who perform a similar function. And it's a public interest function and it gives oversight to compliance with the requirements of the building regulations. There are, it's the law of the land, just to be short about it. The Building Control Act was introduced, a 1990 act, it has been revised a couple of times, and we have the building control regulations, the procedures which allow you to demonstrate how you have complied with the building regulations. A technical building regulation, so it is the law of the land, I'm sure everyone here is interested. You're here because you're interested in achieving compliance with this. On occasion, you can have support in terms of how you comply by reading the Code of Practice for inspecting and certifying buildings and works. And if you're interested, you can also see what obligations the building control authorities have. We operate under a national framework for building control authorities. Where things don't go to plan, there are enforcement options available to building control authorities. And where defects are discovered on site, they're by and large resolved very easily by communication, persuasion, advisory. If that's not possible, there are steps on the enforcement ladder in line with international practice to achieve compliance. And all of these options have been used by building control authorities over the years, except I do not believe the DPP has taken a prosecution of the Building Control Act, but all other enforcement options have been used and are used. So that, as I said, just a gentle reminder and we'll move on now. There are some common misconceptions about local authorities and development, and perhaps some people are nervous about coming to local authorities or engaging with them on development on their properties. But some things you might hear, a year ago I might have called this bar stool talk, I'm not too sure what we call it nowadays, but something like you won't be allowed to touch the building, it's a protected structure. You will have to replace those old single glazed windows to get the grant, or something like, don't even think of using the building for apartments, the fire officer will never allow. So these are you as engineers, as professionals in the construction industry, it's your job to cut through this bluff and to achieve proper sustainable development that's compliant with building regulations. So the point of the talk today being Part L. And Part L1 of the building regulations, it's common to all buildings. A building should be designed and constructed so as to ensure that the energy performance of the building is such as to limit the amount of energy required for the operation of the building and the amount of carbon dioxide emissions associated with this energy use, insofar as it's reasonably practicable. Now, that's pretty straightforward. The, when I refer to technical guidance documents on Part L, I'll be generally speaking to Part L dwellings during the course of the talk. And for existing dwellings. The Part L2, for existing dwellings, the requirements will be met by limiting heat loss and where appropriate, availing of heat gain through the fabric of the building. And be controlling as appropriate the output of the space heating and hot water systems. Now, those are pretty straightforward requirements. Limiting heat loss where appropriate through the fabric of the building and maximising heat gain, revealing of heat gain, or that's simply insulating the building, achieving your elemental U values for your walls, your roof, your windows or doors, your floor. And controlling appropriately output of space heating. That's putting in heating zones, hermestats on radiators, hermestats on walls. Using technology such as Nest or the Hive to remotely control your heating systems. These will all contribute to reducing the amount of energy that you use. And carrying on, you must limit the heat loss from the pipes, ducts and vessels for the transport or storage of heated water or air. Now this, again, you know that you basically are insulating your pipes that carry your hot water. You are insulating your hot water tank, your copper tank. That's very straightforward. And then lastly, on Part L, the providing, not lastly or other, but you must also provide that all oil and gas fired boilers installed as replacements shall meet a minimum seasonal efficiency of 90% or practicable. Now, this means that if you're replacing your boiler, it essentially has to be a new boiler to meet this minimum required efficiency. Now, I hope nobody here is familiar with the second hand boiler industry, because this provision essentially makes that activity illegal. And as well as the Irish Building Regulations and statutory instruments there, it has been added in to L6 that the energy performance of the building must also meet the requirements set out in European Union Energy Performance of Buildings Regulations. And these are. When a dwelling undergoes major renovation, the minimum energy performance requirement of the dwelling or the renovated part thereof is upgraded in order to meet the cost optimal level of energy performance, insofar as this is technically, functionally and economically feasible. And that's it. Those are the regulations. You control your space eating, you control your fabric, you insulate your ductwork, you meet the energy performance of buildings regulations. There's a few words that have not been mentioned. There is no mention of NZ, there's no mention of renewable energies and there's no mention of deep. So, but there's a few terms here that we need to look into further. What is major renovation? What is cost optimal? And what is technically, functionally and economically feasible? So these are three terms in the European Energy Performance of Buildings Directive that you need to understand very clearly. Major renovation, first of all. It is, it's all very clearly set out in technical guidance document L. It is where more than 25% of the surface area of the building envelope undergoes renovation. The building envelope is the entire surface area of a building through which it can lose heat to the external environment or the ground, including all heat loss areas of walls, windows, floors and roofs. Surface area should be calculated using internal dimensions. I hope people can still hear me, I guess warning saying my internet connection is unstable. Now, the surface area, it's the internal surface area of the building that needs to be measured. And that can be important if you're dealing with a much older building with very thick masonry walls. Some walls can be metre and a half thick, so you would measure, it makes a big difference measuring the internal area rather than the external area. Now, the major renovation, what works will contribute to that surface area calculation? And it's set out in Table 6 of Guidance Document L for dwellings 2019. If you are carrying out work to external insulation of the heat loss walls, replacement or upgrade of the external wall structure, internal lining of the surface of the heat loss walls, replacement of windows, replacement of roof structure, replacement of floors or extension works which affect more than 25% of the surface area of the existing dwelling. So you know, you might be taking down a wall, two walls in order to build an extension, so that would impact there. There are worked examples of this in the appendices to Technical Guidance Document L. The Table 6 in TGDL, there's important notes at the end. The major renovation requirement can be activated by works to a single element or to a combination of the elements that are set out in column 1 of Table 7. And I'll have Table 7 coming up shortly. Where are the major renovations, the walls, roofs, ground floors, if they constitute essential repairs? So just after a fire, storm or flood damage, and we have had a lot of buildings suffering storm and flood damage in the last couple of weeks. These do not constitute major renovations, these are essential repairs. Also repairs to pyrite defective concrete blockwork, these are not considered economically feasible to bring these renovations to cost optimal level in terms of energy efficiency. Also painting, replastering, rendering, re-slating, re-tiling, cavity wall insulation, these are also not considered major innovation works. These are set out at the end of Table 6. So you need to know, in terms of the work you're doing, what is contributing to the calculation for 25% of the external surface area. And also what is cost optimal? You might think it's measured, it's a measurement of cost, but it's not. It's a measurement of energy efficiency and energy performance. As the energy performance of the whole dwelling should be improved to cost optimal level. And this level is 125 kilowatt hours per square metre per year, calculated using deep. Now, this is, deep is mentioned here in the context of Guidance Document L. It's not the absolute requirement in regulation, but cost optimal level, 125 kilowatt hours per square metre per annum. Or if you don't want to use deep, or if it's not appropriate or working for you, you may implement the elemental improvements that are set out in Table 7. So it's relatively straightforward, I believe, it's not as complicated as it might be perceived. So this is top half of Table 7 from TGDL. The works that contribute to the major renovation are set out there. External walls, external walls and windows, external walls and roof, external walls and floor. So these are works affecting greater than 25% of external surface area. You can calculate the cost optimal level in terms of the performance that you're designing in. Will it achieve 125 kilowatt hours per square metre per year? Or will we follow the elemental improvements in the second column? And we'd often refer back into Table 5, as it says there, which are the backstop U values for the elemental fabric elements. And the lower half of the table, these works on their own, windows, roof, floor, roof and windows, windows and floor, roof and floor. It's not applicable. These footnotes to the end of tables in the Guidance Documents are very important. So number four there, what does not applicable means? It means it's not considered technically, functionally or economically feasible to bring the whole building to a cost optimal level when replacing the surface area of these elements. So be very careful about the footnotes. Now, what is feasible? Well, you have to do a bit of work and you have to do research and you have to know your building. And you can find a lot of very useful guidance available. ISEM 16883 of 2017 was a very useful document for anyone engaging with existing building stock. It is designed primarily for conservation of cultural heritage and historical buildings, but it will apply to any traditionally built building. And it gives a great guideline in terms of how to approach these projects. You, and I say it's 53 euro for NSAI, so it's pretty good value. And as well, an absolute requirement for anyone working on the renovation of existing buildings is SR54 of 2014, Code of Practice for the Energy Efficient Retrofit of Buildings. And that is, can be downloaded for free from the NSAI. And that is a document that's referenced in Technical Guidance Document L for dwellings. So if you're working on dwellings, a renovation of dwellings, you must have this code of practice. So a few things that you need to do when you're embarking on these projects, you have to, you know, understand, survey the building, understand the fabric of the building, understand the interventions over the years, has there been anything inappropriate that has been done? You need to understand how the building performs and discuss with the building owner what their expectations are. And the objectives that the owner wishes to have, they may wish to reduce their energy consumption to the absolute minimal, that's possible. And, you know, have quite a large budget to achieve that. Or they, they may simply want to, you know, sit in comfort in their sitting room without needing a blanket on a winter's evening. You also need to decide if the energy performance improvement is needed. So there will be a long list of energy performance improvements that are possible and you need to bring that down to a shortlist. And the Code of Practice on Cultural Heritage Buildings sets it out very clearly. So some of them will be possible, but not optimal. So you assess and select the energy improvement measures and you come down to a shortlist of what's appropriate and what achieves, what you need to achieve. Then you implement those measures, you document them and you need to evaluate whether they've worked or not. And if you're brave enough, you will return to your projects of a year ago or two years ago and ask, did this work? Are you happy with the performance of the building? This will benefit you, it'll benefit your client. I made mention about some key performance levels in the building fabric and their backstop U values. For example, like 0.15 watts per square metre degree Kelvin for the ground floor with under 40. So these are set out in the Technical Guides Document L. The, if you're replacing windows and doors, the average U value, value should not exceed 1.4 watts per square metre for the new windows and doors. Now, if you're repairing or renewing existing windows and doors, this does not apply, that's not considered a replacement. So improving the performance of a traditional sliding sash window, you can do that. You can refurbish sliding sash windows, you do not need to bring that work up to 1.4 U value. Need to protect against thermal bridging. You can use the acceptable construction details that are published by the Department of Housing. Or you may refer to SR54, as I said, Code of Practice for Energy Efficient Retrofit of Dwellings. Appendix H there is a lot of very useful guidance on thermal bridging. And I might have mentioned that that's free to download. And you can also go to Thermal Modeler to protect against thermal bridging. It's very important to manage the air permeability of the building and to reduce uncontrolled air permeability where you can basically stop the drafts. Find the drafts and stop them and control them. Simple draft proofing measures, they really do make a big difference to the energy performance of the building and the comfort of those occupying it. But draft seals have limited life and they will, if they're in compression, they will lose their seal over years and they should be renewed fairly regularly. Now, Part L in its application to buildings of architecture or historical interest, there is a very specific guidance and references made in the leading paragraphs to the Technical Guides Document. And it's recognised that Part L does not apply to protective structures. So that's just that. It's recognised that the requirements of Part L may pose challenges for buildings of traditional construction with permeable fabric. So it's important that the performance of traditional construction is understood, how moisture interacts with the building, how moisture gets in, very importantly, how moisture gets out. So the aim should be to improve the energy efficiency of the building as far as is reasonably practicable. And do not do any work that would increase the risk of long term deterioration of the building fabric. So if you don't understand how traditional buildings work, how lime mortar, how rubble walls work, how to protect against water getting in, how to allow water to get out, how to control the internal environment, well, you need to study it, you need to read SR54. So there's also hand in hand with Part L. The Part L of the building regulations cannot function on its own. It is not there as a standalone document, you must also consider Part F ventilation. This provides for adequate ventilation in buildings. And there is no conflict between providing adequate ventilation in the building and conserving fuel and energy by complying with Part L. They both contribute to the comfort and sustainable performance of the building and a healthy indoor environment. And of course, SR54 of 2014, very important document and it is referenced, as I said, in Technical Guides Document F. And there's Table 30 in SR54, which gives you clear guidelines on the ventilation requirements when you're working with existing dwellings. Here is a workmanship. Your all works to which the regulations, the building regulations apply shall be carried out with proper materials and in a workmanlike manner. So proper materials, this means the materials which are fit for the use for which they are intended and for the conditions which they are to be used. So not only do the materials have to be good materials, but they also have to be good material in the intended final location in the building. Will they perform in this location as they are intended to perform? So again, you need to understand how the building will function and are you, some materials will contribute to the development of condensation if they're placed in the wrong location. Very careful that you're using the correct materials, the correct way, the correct location. Now, I've been, as previously just mentioned, that there are such a thing as dispensation and relaxation from requirements of the building regulations. Now, this can be useful in some situations. Building Control Authority can, if it considers it reasonable with having regard to all of the circumstances of the situation. Building Control may grant a dispensation from or a relaxation of any requirement of the building regulations. So it is available, it is used, it's not used that often, because it's not necessarily appropriate to use it often, but it is there. And Building Control Authority may make this dispensation or relaxation subject to any conditions that it sees fit. If you are, this process, it should contribute to the delivery of quality and compliance in a project and sustainable development. It can help and provide clarity if there's a genuine contradiction between different requirements of the building regulations on your particular project. It may be useful if complying with a particular condition or requirement of planning permission would be challenging. You know, also complying with requirements of building regulations and it may help to strike an appropriate balance in that situation. And in terms of Part L, the alternative solution being presented in terms of like, we can't comply with requirements of Part L in this situation, but our alternative solution here, it should result in a medium or long term reduction in the overall energy use of the building and the consumption of fossil fuels and the amount of carbon dioxide produced by that building in the medium to long term. And there are situations where there are buildings of high heritage value. Traditionally built buildings, they may not be protected structures, they are subject to Part L, but complying with performance of Part L may adversely impact on the valuable architectural heritage. There may be situations where this can be put to the Building Control Authority, who will consider that. So the, if you do want to make an application for dispensation or relaxation, the application should be made online through the BCMS. Very recently, the Building Control Management System launched a facility where applications for fire safety certificates, disability access certificates and dispensation relaxations may be made online. Set out the parts, building regulations from which relaxation or dispensation is being sought, Part L1 for example. Set out the grounds for the application, they should be technical, they should be detailed. Should be drawings, there should be a detailed expert report. Any compensatory or mitigating measures that you are proposing to compensate for this exception to complying with building regulations. There's a small fee and very important not to just launch into that, but you should talk to the building control officer in your area before you make such an application. Very often, if you delve into a situation adequately, you will find that it may not be necessary and you will comply without the need to apply for it, but the option is there. Now, the most relevant provision of all in the building regulations in terms of works to existing buildings, it's set down in nineteen ninety-seven and the building regulations article nine two, no works shall be carried out, which would cause a new or greater contravention of these regulations. So you cannot carry out any work, it will cause a newer greater contravention of these regulations. And this also harks back to not causing, not doing any work which would cause deterioration of the fabric, understanding your building as traditionally built building that you might be dealing with, understanding how the building performs and not doing anything to deteriorate the fabric of that building. If you do, you would be in breach of carrying out work which would cause a new or greater contravention of the regulations. And I'm just like, it's an offence to breach any requirement of the Building Control Act, Building Control Regulations or building regulations. So also working with existing buildings, the Government of Ireland recently published Bringing Back Homes Manual for the Reuse of Existing Buildings. And quite a lot of work was put into this by the Department of Housing and a working group that was established with them. The, it sets out the planning system, the building control system or other regulatory issues that might impact on the reuse of a building for residential use. City Health and Welfare Fire Services Act, and it goes through those processes. It's very useful document, it's very useful document to demonstrate to your client the complexity of a project and so they understand what they're getting into. It's basically all, all there in bringing back homes. It's also lists on the incentives and grants and assistance that are available, such as Living City Initiative and others. There are various typologies. It goes through a step-by-step process, first of all, as I see here, assessing the project, designing your project, getting your statutory approvals and then building it. Is a commencement notice required, very common question we get in building control. There are various examples, different typologies. This is a three-story building with over the shop accommodation. So separate ground floor shop and two apartments overhead. And that was being converted from a shop with living, people living over the shop. So there are a lot of options and examples there. And this useful flow chart, you can't read any of that, but that basically you go through that flow chart in bringing back homes. And you will find out what do I need a commencement notice and what type of commencement notice can I use? What applies to my project? So that's on page seventy-eight of Bringing Back Homes. The, I'd like to bring to your attention, because a lot of you today are interested in the energy performance of existing buildings and appropriate interventions with existing buildings. And the Department of Culture Heritage and the Guelph have published a E tender for energy efficiency traditional building. And this is live on E tenders, so I'm sure many of the consultants there will, will familiar with that. And the project involves development of detailed illustrated guidance document to, for advice on appropriate operating energy efficiency performance of traditionally built buildings. And this will update the department's existing publications in this regard. So that's it. Very well on time, I may have rushed through that a little bit too quickly. But the, the message that I'm trying to give is that the building regulations, as they apply to existing buildings, are appropriate and they're proportionate. You should apply your learning, your technical knowledge, your skills and your experience, and most importantly, your common sense to the project that you're working on. You need to achieve compliance with the building regulations. And the building control officers across the country, they'll support you in your efforts to comply. There's no doubt about that. And there is a lot of expertise available in the local authorities that is there. You just need to ask and look for advice and guidance. Before you do that though, you should read the technical guide and document L because the answer may well be in there. So that's it. Thank you very much indeed. And I will hand you back to Mairead and to Shirley. And Shirley will have the, the last poll question of the day. So thank you very much indeed.
Hi, everyone. I'm just gonna launch the last of our polls, just bear with me one sec. So the last of our polls will be on your screen now. So the question is, what topic would you like to see M B C O and Engineers Ireland present on a future webinars? As before, you have forty seconds to answer. So the results of the poll are nineteen percent B C M S emission process, fifty-three percent building regulations, ten percent Building Control Act and nineteen percent enforcement. Thank you for taking part in our poll today. I'm now going to hand you over to Mairead, who will commence the Q and A segment of this webinar.
Thank you, Shirley. We have a couple of questions here, Pat, if you want to turn on your mic and your speaker as well. The first one here is John Carley, and he mentions Engineers Ireland. Apologies to Engineers Ireland, we hadn't got this slide up for our logo. We're all working for different parts of the country, so to try and get coordinated, present the webinars is an interesting activity. Wicklow here, to all pens, I agree with the Barstool Talk, that's Sinead from Wicklow. Pat, if you have anything else to add on Barstool Talk that you spoke about in your slide?
Oh, you'll have to put a lift in. That'll be another one. Don't, don't you, don't go near that because you'll have to put a lift in, it'll be too expensive.
Yeah, we have Peter here from Mulvay Hill in relation to Partel item. Pat mentioned at the beginning, it stated a limit heat loss from ducts for air. Could Pat confirm if this applies to heat recovery, ventilation, ducting installed, et cetera? That's example, warm heated air via ducting in the unheated ceiling void being supplied into a living room. Such ducting be insulated. That's a long one, Pat, I don't sure, we may have to.
Yes, well, if it, if, if energy, if you're consuming energy to heat the air within those ducts, you must insulate the duct work if the energy is going to be lost, say, to an unheated space. If the duct work is within the space that you intend to heat, well, then it's not necessarily necessary. It's passing through the room that you're heating. It's not necessary, but if it's going to be lost to a space that you don't intend to heat, well, it should be insulated. So that, that's, it would be same for a water pipe, you'd insulate it to the attic.
Yep, and we have a couple of questions down the dispensation application for dispensation relaxation from Partel. We have Conal and we have Mark Costello, Conan Finn, Mark Costello. Is there, is there examples where dispensation may be granted? And the other one is if a building is on the protected structure register, then under section not point six, is it exempt from meeting Partel? I assume this means that an application for dispensation or relaxation from Partel for these building types is not required. Can you please confirm this, if this interpretation is correct?
Okay, well, yeah, if the building is on the register of protected structures, then Partel does not apply. So you, you don't need to apply for dispensation from the requirements of Partel. You should still, whenever you're intervening in a building, and this goes like across the board, this goes for access for people. It goes for conserving fuel and energy. You should take the opportunity when you are intervening in a building to do the best that you can to, to carry out the optimal work that would give the best return for the client in terms of the investment they're making. They're going to be ripping out a proportion of their building. There is opportunity to do more than perhaps the minimum. You know, building regulations are minimum standards. Nobody here went into their leaving search looking for the minimum to pass. They all wanted to outperform and do the best they can. So the building regulations are the same, do not strive for the minimum, do the best and take the opportunities that are offered there. So there will be opportunities in protective structures to improve the energy performance of the building and they should be taken. And you can discuss those with your conservation officer primarily as to what's appropriate or not. And in buildings that are not protected structures, that are of high heritage value, and it may be appropriate for, say, the windows. You, you need to improve the performance of the windows. And so there are situations, maybe a stained glass window or the like, that might be of heritage value. You can look for dispensations for that. Or where the major renovation requirement will kick in. And you're not able to achieve that without adversely affecting the architectural value of heritage value. Well, then you can talk to building control, that's where you're fixed there.
Yeah, and I have another one here on dispensation relaxation, I think, but I'll leave it to you as well to answer. Process for applying for dispensation in practice, we have the B C M S there and can you appeal it? That's from Liam.
Yes. Yes, when you apply through the B C M S, similar to, it's an application that will be considered by the building control officer. It's considered on the basis of the information that's submitted with the application. And a decision is made, is it appropriate to grant or not? Will it be granted, will it be refused, or maybe granted with conditions? And that can, that decision can be appealed to on board panel in the same way as fire safety certificate, disability access certificate decision, or any of the conditions attached to the decision may be appealed. So straightforward application process and the decision can be appealed.
Yep, and will these slides be available for attendees? The answer to that is yes, we'll make available the, the video and the slides and the questions that we're going to get through. There's a few questions here, Pat, on how will enforcement be made that contractors are dealing with performance gaps, particularly in insulation. There's pale Rogers and we have Kieran, we have good, good few questions on enforcement. So you might just maybe talk a little bit maybe about how we as building control officers enforce.
Well, the, the primary responsibility for compliance with the building regulations rests with the building owner, with the designers, with the builder, with the assigned certifier on site, carrying out their inspections. Very, in terms of compliance of Partel, it's very important that the correct products are specified to begin with and then that they're used in the correct way. So workmanship on site is very important. If the site is sloppy, generally speaking, there are going to be problems with making sure the insulation is properly installed and that the air tightness requirements are being properly catered for. So you need to, on the site, you need to watch your workmanship. And you need to have clear lines of communication between a signed certifier and the builder. The builder should have, say, a no fault policy be useful so that problems or accidents such as tearing of impermeable layers are just brought to attention and they're fixed and it's not a problem. It's much easier fix something, easier to do it right first time. It's also much easier to fix something when, when it's discovered that it's wrong instead of hiding it. Building control officers will visit site. In Dublin, we're like we're in the process of inspecting about two and a half thousand apartments that have been notified to us over the course of the summer. And we'll be on site and we'll be looking at, workmanship is very telling for us. And if there's poor workmanship and we, we delve into it, we tend to find greater problems. And they just have to be fixed.
Very good, Pat. And then can the list of building control officers be updated on the Department of Housing's website? We'll bring that to their attention. Pat, thank you for that. Pat, party walls included in the twenty-five percent calculation for major renovation works?
They're not, because they're not the thermal envelope.
Yeah, okay.
The wall separating you from the external environment.
Very good. We've quite a lot of, thank you, Pat, for that and expected. We have quite a lot of questions here. So what we will do now, because of our time is running out, we will collate all of those questions and we will answer them all in the context of the building legislative framework, building regulations and Partel, and we'll make all the questions available to everybody. Let's say, thank you, Pat, for that. And we have, we have a, a couple of dates for your diary. If you want to go to the next slide, surely the diary dates there. We have a future webinars now, we'll have the next one will be on the fifteenth of September. And that will be on the B C M S and operation of future and building control. That's in conjunction with the housing agency and John O'Connor will go through the history of building control. Our Richard Butler from the National Building Control Office will give an update on the issues we're finding at B car and two thousand and fourteen and the future of building control and how we are ensuring compliance with the building regulations. The EU Construction Products Regulations, a very topical issue at the moment, market surveillance of Brexit. I will give that on the first of October, an update on that and where we should be with that and what we should be looking at. Part B building regulations, Richard Butler and Aino Cunilla from our office will give an update on that in the context of how we're operating Part B, how it's getting on on the ground and what they, what it says in the technical guidance documents. And that's the twenty-second of October. So we have our Twitter details there. Don't forget to follow us on Twitter at N B C O Ireland for details about future events, webinars. And you can subscribe to our YouTube channel where we have, where we'd be putting all these YouTube videos for the webinars. We've done with very useful webinars or very useful Youtubes on how to get into the B C M S, how to register, how to submit a commencement notice, et cetera. And also our website, if you visit our website at localgov.ie, we have our quarterly newsletters. Our next newsletter will be out next month on topical issues and what's going on, what are the issues that are out there in the field. So at this stage, the National Building Control Office and Engineers Ireland would like to thank all of you for attending today and note that all Engineers Ireland members will be able to gain one C P D, one hour C P D for this. I'd like to thank Sinead Quinn Phillips from Engineers Ireland, apologies for your missing the logo in the beginning. And Pat Nestor from Dublin City Council put quite a lot of time into this and thank you, Pat. And Shirley Lamb from the National Building Control Office for organizing the webinar and giving of their time. And what I'd like to say on closing is that I'd like to remind everybody that Pat's presentation, his presentation shows us how we can reuse our existing building stock. And that shouldn't be an issue and shouldn't be a problem. We can implement measures to mitigate against the negative impacts of climate change and protect our environment while at the same time complying with Partel of the building regulations. And the building regulations, Partel really is, in essence, what it's telling you to do is, is, you know, minimize the heat loss from the building fabric and maximize any heat gain from renewables. So that shouldn't be too difficult of a concept. In any event, we'll have everything available and we will send you out the link to the YouTube video. And goodbye and take care, thank you very much.